Meeting for November twentieth to order tonight Commissioner Grove does ask Mr. Hyatt here to pray for us. Everyone pray.
Good day, for rain, blessings, freedom, for all good things in this place. Please bless us tonight. Make this a good night for us. Blessings that we try to help our community.
Everyone stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ben Corr, could you call the roll please?
Mr. Simkins, Mr. Ledger, Mr. McElwain, Mr. Beatty, Mr. Dawson, Ms. Spicer, Mr. Buckner, Mr. Britt, Mr. Petty, Mr. Williams, Mr. Grove, Ms. Gray.
We have a corm, it's good to see everyone here tonight. First order business is approval of minutes up on the floor for a motion for that. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor vote was stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number two is public comment. We do have a sign up for public comment for item number five, which is the quarterly financial reports. That's okay, that'd be on item number four. All right. Joseph Van Dusen, if you would like, if you come forward and speak, we're going to allow you four minutes on this.
So I reviewed the twenty-four three comprehensive plan and I do appreciate y'all for looking so out on the future. It's essential for good governance and also public buy-in. So I do appreciate that. I live in Cumberland Furnace and my profession is engineer and as part of my background is transportation engineering. So that's what I'm mainly going to focus on in this this comment. I understand that this is a projection for twenty years. So I understand that details are going to probably change in that time period. But I had some comments of from what I can comment on, from what I know personally. So so transportation. In the comprehensive plan for short term, item number fifteen, which is the roadway between through Charlotte from forty-nine to forty-seven. In there is recommended for four lanes. That seems pretty pretty expensive. I would recommend more lanes, especially turning lanes and longer those lanes instead of signalized intersections throughout there. And and not expand that to four lanes. That's going to be quite pricey for that. Similarly, in that same stretch, sidewalks would make sense between the core court, a court area here, which has a lot of residential to that business district up the hill. That would take off some of the local traffic because you can't walk up that hill without getting hit right now. In the plan, it talked a lot about diversity of transportation, biking, walking and and vehicle traffic, but it didn't talk anything about any sort of like buses. And I think collector routes from our outlying northern communities of Slayden, Van Leeu, Cumberland Furnace, Charlotte, White Bluff and Burns would help tie the county together, especially tied in with distribution routes between in Dixon itself. So basically a county bus service wouldn't would be a good thing to be looking towards over the next twenty years to reduce the amount of vehicle traffic that we need to account for instead of spending millions on expanding roadways. And potentially buses to like Austin P up in Clarksville because one of the priorities of this plan is developing our internal talent. And when I see that, I read our kids. And in order to do that, they everyone in the community needs to be able to afford to have their children be able to go to our our excellent higher education facilities, both here in Dixon County and in nearby areas. Along the lines of promote internal talent. And this is just as much for the county commission as it is for the school board. If we want to promote our internal talent, we need to start with our kids and that's if we don't already have them, we should have a gifted program. And our our schools should have both college bound and trades based paths instead of forcing everyone into a one size fits all solution. And I would be happy to talk with any of you guys after after this meeting about these details. I transmit these in email format for the details of some of the logic behind some of these comments. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next on a business, public hearing revisions of the zoning resolution for for the R three residential district. Mr. Arnold.
Thank you, Mayor. If you remember about six months ago, a moratorium was placed on the R three residential district. The planning commission created a working group. What you have before you is what the final revised version looked like. Some of the major changes that they did, you'll notice on any size lot in the R three district, you must have both public water and public sewer. The minimum requirement is still this ten thousand square foot lot. You also notice the driveway has to be at least twenty foot wide. It surfaced with an all-weather dustless material from the road to the principal structure. And one of the other things that was done, the elimination of duplexes and boarding houses. This is what you consider your typical rental type property, and they didn't think that's necessarily to fit into this type of neighborhood. This was approved by the planning commission at the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting by a vote of ten to zero to forward it to the nice public area.
Thank you. Any question for Mr. Darnell? Yes. Feel free to ask him now, even if we get too long, we'll go on to get public comment, but let's take an opportunity to help Commissioner.
Okay, I just had a, I know I had discussed this with you and RJ one time before, but on the setbacks, you know, typically when you go down and zone in like R one, R two, R three, you know, usually the setbacks will go down. And I've noticed our R one, R two setbacks are the same. And so when you look at this, you pretty much
One thing we have done, which next month will be coming up, it'd be the A two. We did go to seventy-five foot on that. And at some point in time, all of them may go to that. But it's not been approved as of yet.
Right. I guess my question is though, is if you if if you have a ten thousand square foot lot and you're a hundred by hundred, it leaves a twenty foot wide envelope for you to build a house twenty foot wide. And I guess that was my comment. Something that I wish they would have looked at that even if, I mean, I guess that was my argument because I've seen that come through and you're like, hey, you can't make that work. You know, we're trying to build a twenty foot wide house. If you're, if you got eighty foot of setbacks, you know, it only leaves you. So I mean, I wish, and I it's fine. I mean, I won't blow it all up. I know they didn't a lot of word, but I wish they would look at those setbacks because typically we see an R one, R two, R three, you go down and your setbacks, you know.
That is something that could be looked at in the future.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Commission? Thank you. At this point in time, we'll have a public hearing. Is anyone here for the public to speak on this issue? Anyone here to speak on this issue? Let the record show that there was, if it's not, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Next item of business is committee reports. First committee report, Commissioner Randy Simkins.
Yes, tonight, we're at our last ag meeting. We were, and it's in your newsletter. We got everybody got one tonight. We got a person here in in our county that that has really done some achievements and we we as a ag committee thought that we need to recognize her tonight, but she's sick. So it's going to be two weeks before we'll be able to do this. I don't want to get in too much involved with it. Ms. Alice is here tonight also with but I'd rather let Katie be here tonight and then we can, we can say a lot of good things about her and that's we as an ag committee thought she needed to be recognized, but we're going to put this off for two weeks.
Thank you. It's good to have you here, Ms. Harmon. Appreciate you being here, taking the time to be with us tonight. Any other committees report? Seeing none. First item of business is quarterly financial reports, all funds except schools. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, this right here, two weeks ago, we discussed these first quarter reports. This is at June or September thirtieth of twenty-three. I don't have anything to add to these unless you have some questions at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Hall? We'll open the floor for a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Simkins. Second by Commissioner Ledger. Any questions for discussion? Hearing none. All in favor vote was stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number two is budget amendments, all funds except schools. Mr. Hall.
Yeah, and these were just two items within the general fund, one oh one for local health and dental health program, which is also one of the health department. And there's nothing changed on those. Those are exactly like I sent you two weeks ago also.
Any questions? Open the floor for motion. I think Commissioner Spicer just made a motion to have a second. Second by Commissioner Buckner. Any question or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor vote was stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Next time of business, the two thousand twenty-four holiday schedule. It is the same twelve holidays that we historically take here. Like to point those out to you. That is, they're all standard and revolve around each holiday, you can see. What I also sent forward to you is a list of other important Dixon County dates. Periodically, we have requests about other dates. We've we are very generous with vacation and holidays. So in order to keep ourselves fully staffed, we're probably at a back sore. We need to be at holidays, but that's not to disregard other dates that are important in the history of Dixon County and to its people. So what I'm asking for on these is these be recognized occasions in Dixon County. There are dates that were not closed for business, but they're important enough to recognize along with your standard holidays, recognizing Saint Patrick's Day on March seventeenth, Mother's Day on May twelfth, the day Tennessee became a state on June first, Father's Day, June sixteenth, Juneteenth on June nineteenth, October fourteenth, Columbus and Indigenous People Day, October twenty-fifth, Dixon County, the day it was created, and on November twenty-ninth, Native American Heritage Day. So as far as the holidays have those established and these other important dates in Dixon County history, that's what I put before you tonight for your approval. Open floor for motion. That was motion by Commissioner McElwain, second by Commissioner Ledger. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor vote was stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. The comprehensive plan is before you in its final form. The resolution is being put forward tonight for its acceptance. I want to read this resolution so I can give some clarity to it. Resolutions expressing support for the regional comprehensive plan, whereas the Dixon County Regional Planning Commission has approved a regional comprehensive land use plan involving the county of Dixon, Tennessee, the city of Dixon and the town of White Bluff and the town of Burns, the two thousand forty-three Dixon County Comprehensive Plan. And whereas the process of developing the two thousand forty-three Dixon County Comprehensive Plan began in two thousand twenty and involved the input of multiple governments, utilities and citizens. Whereas the regional planning commission found it to be in the best interest of the citizens of Dixon County to approve the two thousand forty-three Dixon County Comprehensive Plan. Now therefore it be resolved, the the county legislative body for the county of Dixon, Tennessee, meeting its regular session on the twentieth day of November, two thousand twenty-three, and Charlotte, Dixon County, Tennessee, expresses its support for the regional planning commission's approval of the two thousand forty-three comprehensive plan. I know y'all have all been sent this probably well over a month ago, and it's been available to you. Terry Malone has been our economic development officer. She was one of the key leaders on this for Dixon County Government. If you have any questions, I know she's reached out to y'all on a couple of occasions, but she's here tonight if you like any more clarity on this. Please.
So I know we've emailed each other back and forth where we're able to get the population numbers corrected in the final format. Okay.
And then I can go back in and edit and update those numbers. So yes.
That's fine. I just noticed that they, I guess it was just input wrong or something. So, okay, that was the
Good for both.
So I guess this plan, I know this is just a plan. This has, this doesn't change chapter eleven oh one growth plan. In other words, this has nothing to do with if we're going to rezone or anything, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Those are good questions because there is a process where you can make this iron cloud, but all the governments involved in this and the stakeholders that did the work felt like this need to be more of a roadmap where it shows you a direction we're going, but there are several different ways to get there. I didn't want to be in a position where one government was overriding the other. It was a cooperative deal where we have a lot of similar issues, but there's each governmental unit, the three cities in Dixon County have different things. So again, the proverbial roadmap, there's a lot of ways to get there. We all have the same goal, but we might want a different way to do it. So we wanted to leave everybody's zoning codes, all the integrity of that in place. And the stakeholders did a good job and as well as Terry, Ms. Malone doing a good job. Jeff Martin and White Bluff really stepped in and did a, did a great job helping get that done. There was a lot of people that had a hand in it, but those two really drove this thing and got across the finish line. And I appreciate you, Terry, and I appreciate the work Jeff Martin did to make this happen. Any other questions for Terry, Ms. Malone? I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Is this a continuation of the plan that had to be put together years ago, you know, where each community would give it to the county and then y'all kind of overlaid it and is this a continuation of where that started?
It does, and it doesn't affect chapter eleven oh one. Other this gives us a roadmap and a place to start. There will still be a convening of the county, of the of the governments inside the county, along with county government to look at that, but it was the thought of the commission sometime back and all the folks, especially in the planning and development area that we needed to get some clarity, and that's what this document hopes to do. So we have an outline to work on, but the planning commission still has its authority. The county commission still has its authority to make any changes. Thank you. There's no other questions. I'll open the floor for motion. Motion by Commissioner Commissioner Grove. It took y'all a while. Y'all did it once. So second by Commissioner Petty. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor vote was stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number five is quarterly financial reports. There's always a board of education representative here, and it just has to be Dr. Danny Weeks tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I do bring you the quarterly financial reports from all of the school funds. Those are the ones that were presented to you at planning session last month or a couple of weeks ago. And we submit those. We are in very good financial shape for the quarter.
Up on the floor for any questions for Dr. Weeks. Up on the floor for a motion for approval. Motion by Commissioner Brett, second by Commissioner Williams. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor vote was stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. We're about to get into probably one that could take a little bit of time. So before you run off or they chase you out with too many questions, we want you to hang around a little later for other business after we get this done. Thank you. Next item, business is budget amendment, all school funds. Dr. Weeks.
Commissioners, in our last, at your planning session, I was asked by our Board of Education to come present a budget amendment to you, which represented capital outlay needs that the board had prioritized and sent to you. Since that point in time, I'm bringing you the same list of items that was presented two weeks ago. However, you'll notice one change on there. If you look at item number two, the Creekwood High School roof. We had a much higher estimate on that. We had received some engineering consultant work. And again, that's why we we do budgets and that's why we talk to consultants. But when we actually put that out to bid, that number is going to be much closer to five hundred thousand. I think you had a number it was one point six or one point, one point three on the previous estimate, and we're very fortunate to get that bid back. I will say that bid has not been approved by the Board of Education, but it's been received. It was received and opened last week, and it will go to our board this coming Tuesday night at their regular board meeting. So that's the only change that you'll see on that document. And again, the the total request for budget amendments is six point five nine zero million. And that's down from as a result of that roofing actual bid on that. Again, that bid's not been accepted, but that that does reflect a change that that we've received in there. Be glad to answer any questions you would have.
Thank you. Floor is open for questions for Dr. Weeks.
I guess one question that I, so how long is that bid good for? In case this doesn't go through tonight, I guess my question would be, do y'all have the money to make this happen? Or is that bid going to be good for sixty or ninety days if it takes that long to get through the amendment process?
We, we do not have the money in our fund balance to do that. So I mean, we have the money in fund balance. We didn't have the money in our operating budget to do that. I don't have the answer to that tonight, Mr. Williams, but I would say the work's scheduled for the summer anyway. So I assume I assume that it's going to be good because, you know, I'm sure it's just a matter of ordering materials whenever they need that. Most bids that we let Most bids that we let do have a clause that we ask for sixty to ninety days. So I'm going to estimate that would probably be the case.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Fixing the Dixon County senior high roofing?
No, sir. This was, this was simply Creekwood High School roof.
So this is still the, the like we talked about the first registered schedule meeting, right? The whole thing, we either got to prove it all or none, right? Is that right, Mayor? My motion is still going to be denied, and we'll go into it on to the discussion.
It's a proper motion to deny that at that point that we open the floor for a second for denial. Second by Commissioner Williams. On the motion, any discussion? Remind everyone when we take the vote, a yes vote is to deny. A no vote is not to deny because the motion was made in the negative. So a yes means to deny. Any questions, discussion?
I guess just to reference why, and I know I said this during the committee meeting two weeks ago, but I guess there are some things on here I know that need to be done, and there's some things on there that I think that need to be in the whole master plan. And that's why I'm voting against it. Like, we need roofs. I know they need to be repaired and it's, and all that stuff that's maintenance, security items. I'm a hundred percent for, but for things that's outside of that, I think we still need to have a comprehensive plan that I know I've been asking for, for two years from the school board to have, to adopt a plan. And if that's a priority, one through ten or a five-year plan, I guess that's what I'm looking for if. And then I kind of made this suggestion, I guess, two weeks ago. I guess, you know, for the school board that's listening, if they want to bring twelve amendments next month, you know, I guess the county commission can hash out whichever ones they want. So, but I know that's important. That's, and that's, but this is why I'm voting against it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Doc, I want you to get discouraged because a, after we take this vote, I want to talk to the mayor and Brian about doing something else because these maintenance issues need to be done. This roof needs to be fixed. The high school roof I just found out about in the last two weeks has been leaking for two years, and y'all have got tarps over it. And that's unacceptable to me. It don't make sense to me how you let a roof leak and nobody wants to bring it to us for it fixed. And it's like, if, if we, if we just go along with what y'all say all the time, nothing gets fixed. The CET building at Creekwood High School needs to be built. So it's like, y'all don't listen to what needs to be funded, then you throw this other stuff in here. So I, I just go along with this vote, then I'm going to talk to the mayor about some other things that, that, so we can get the ball rolling. Because I believe this needs to be done, and these items need to be done, but they need to be prioritized. And, and the ball needs to be rolling into a motion with leadership and direction. And somebody's going to have to give the leadership and direction. So I'm, I'm going to leave it at that for now, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments on the motion? All in, I'm sorry.
Saying, we're not going to do none of this with a no, with a yes vote.
A yes vote means we're not doing anything.
Don't do any of these.
Excuse me.
Anyone, even with the Creekwood GM?
At that point, but I think what Mr. Grove is saying, if I'm reading between the lines, is that he's going to bring up something after this, probably asked to do the portion of it. We have to take the motion, the request from schools as presented and act on that. That was what our attorney suggested, and rightly so, is our last meeting. But I, I think there's something that Commissioner Grove, and I know we discussed with our attorney earlier, to maybe take up a portion of this. And I apologize, Commissioner Grove, I'm out of turn on that.
That, that's something I don't understand. And if, if this is all maintenance, and you got bids here right now to do, do the work, and we're going to put this off, and we've already lowered it from eight, eight something to six five, I, I got a problem with that. I don't understand what you're going to gain.
Commissioner Grove, you want to expand on? Questions called for. Is any objection to question being called? Hearing no objection. All in favor denying the list, state aye? Opposed? If, if you're, okay. The, the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. So this, this request is denied. Commissioner Grove?
Yeah, I'd like to suspend, and you're going to have to help us do this. And me and the mayor's talked about this several times because I believe that everybody on this board wants to get the roof fixed. So when it, can we suspend it? Walk me through what we need to do.
Yeah. So if you're wanting to have another item to be considered for a vote tonight, then the first thing would be to ask to suspend the rules to put whatever it is that you're wanting on the agenda for consideration. Get a second to that motion to suspend and then vote on it, assuming you have a majority vote to do that. Then you can take up the item that you're wanting to do.
I wanted to suspend rules like Brian said. I want to prove four million dollars at this time to send back to the school board. It's, they're going to be their option so they can go ahead and get some of this work started. Because it needs to get started and it needs to be done. The, the roof needs to be fixed at Creekwood now, and the other, some of these other items need to be done now. The football field at Creekwood.
Well, I apologize, Commissioner Grove. So the motion is suspended. So let's take care of that first. We have a motion suspended as our second. Second by Commissioner McIlwain. All in favor of suspension of rules here, this item, but stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. The ayes have it. Commissioner Grove?
So I think our, our, the direction that we want to go into, and, and, and I've discussed at length with several people and the mayor, is that we feel like we need to approve about four million right now, today, and send it back to the school board to get some of these maintenance issues done. The one issue I have with the Creekwood projects and now the roof at the high school, it's like, i- if we don't carry any weight, nothing gets done. If we just start proving money, I'll spend on what you want. The roof don't get fixed in his two years at Dixon. We feel like that the, the Creekwood football field needs to be turfed at some point, but there's a CET building that we denied a year ago that's never been brought before since like it's lacking. It's just slagging. It's got pushed to the side. I think that needs to be one project. So, so my recommendation would be to the school board in this motion to do, to do most of the majority of work on here. Come back to us in the spring with a plan for the CET building, along with the football field at Creekwood, along with fixing the roof at Dixon. Get them three things done in March. Come back to us with a plan instead of just keep kicking it down the road, kicking it down the road, and let's get some stuff done. But we need to go ahead and get some of this other stuff started and done at this time. So that's why my motion will be to approve four million to get that work started.
What, and again, on which projects?
Well, we, since it's a cheaper bid now, so we need to, to go down through it. I think the, the maintenance at the football field in Dixon needs to be done. The field needs to be done. The, the roof at Creekwood definitely needs to be done now at this time. I don't know. I think we'd entertain everybody's opinion on it to come up with about a four million dollar project so they can go ahead and start work. Then come back with us with a total plan in the spring to get this other work done.
Mr. Reagan?
Yep. It may be easier. I think you identified three projects that you were excluding from the list for now. Which were those projects, Mr. Grove?
I mean, I'm definitely excluding the Creekwood football field simply because I want it to be tied with the maintenance bill. I mean, the CET building. And it seems to some reason the CET building is getting, I, I have a hard time voting to support a football field when it's been a year and we don't have a plan for a CET building. So you're telling kids it's okay over there to play on a, an astroturf football field, but not build a building for them that, that's going to teach them a trade and, and, and education. So that's my main problem with, with that. And, and the roof at, at Dixon leaking now that it's been leaking for two years. I mean, we've got to take care of the buildings we've got, and we've got to use common sense about it. So it just don't make sense to me how we can go over and justify turf and Creekwood field at this time, not knowing where the soccer field is going to be, not knowing anything, and not, not having a CET building in place and, and doing one without doing both of them. Because I'm for both of them. But it's been a year and nothing's come back to us. So how do we make them bring something back to us that makes sense? And, and I'd like for some of y'all's comments on it.
So I just want to ask, point of clarification again. So we have the one item on the back, the artificial turf field CWHS for a million three fifty. Well, I'm not sure I found the right one, but are there other items that you were wanting to push down the road and not make a part of the four million that you're proposing tonight?
Give me just a second. Now, let's Mr. Spinken, Spinken speak. I'm looking.
Okay.
Dr. Weeks, have you ever, in your time being here, failed to do any maintenance that you come in and ask to do?
Are you asking, has this body failed to provide?
Have you or the school board ever failed to bring us something in here that you're going to fix and not fix it?
No, sir.
Do we have six point five million dollars available to fix all these projects? Do you have that?
Yes, sir. We, we, we comfortably have that in our fund balance, and the board has prioritized this list of items. And they have asked me to bring this list to you. Again, it started out at eight, right at eight million dollars. We trimmed one down because of item number six, which was paving of the maintenance and transportation facility. We, we had a much better bid on there. And so you see the actual number three sixty-eight, one sixty. We discussed that at our last planning session that we had with you. And then since that point in time, the number on line number two roofing at Creekwood is roughly going to be five hundred thousand dollars. We have a couple of bids, and as I've stated earlier, the board has not approved those bids, but all of the bids are within that five hundred thousand dollar range.
Also, correct me if I'm wrong, and, and Brian, you may need to on this also. We have a school board, and we have a school director, used to be a superintendent, but he's a director now, I think. Is it, is it our job to sit here and, and figure out what needs to be fixed in our school system? Or is it the school board and the school director? I guess either one can answer that. I mean, I just want a clarification. I just don't want us to be overstepping our bounds over top of our school board. If we're going to sit here and make all the decisions, why would we need a school board?
Why is it our decision if it's not our business?
Uh, no, no, I'm talking to Dr. Weeks or, or Brian Reagan.
Yeah. So ultimately, the school board is in complete control of utilizing the funds that this body appropriates. And this body has certain minimum funding obligations each year, which it always exceeds. But within the money appropriated, then the board has the authority to make the decision. When the board comes back and asks for additional money to be appropriated, then it is appropriate for the county commission to inquire about the use of the funds in light of funds available, future borrowing, there are a number of factors that can be considered. And so while this body's not going to be in the weeds about actually the maintenance being done, it's not an inappropriate thing for this body to inquire about what the funds are to be used for in making a decision about whether to appropriate additional funds.
And also, the way I've always, I think I have, I don't know. If we have the funds available to, for this request, without having to raise taxes or ask the taxpayers for extra money, or go find the money somewhere, if we have the money available in the school board and the school director comes in here and asks with a list is what he'd like to have done and have fixed. Think we'd be doing them an injustice myself.
That, you're giving some latitude on that, and I may be the one that has guided part of that discussion. My concern in unleashing, and again, I'm quite aware of my responsibility here, is your vote. I'll only vote in case of the time. But as the steward of the funds, my concern is if we spend all of the money that was requested before we have a clear bid on Charlotte Middle School, the CET building, Dixon Elementary School, any, any other item that we may not be able to complete the, the funding, the funding for that if we spend it all upfront. So that would be a concern of mine. Again, it's up to this body, but I think y'all, y'all pay me to hear my financial advice, and that's what it is on that because I agree there's not anything on that list that does not need to be done. That, that's not the question. My question is concerned if we're using funds and, and I'll just make the math easy. If it was eight billion dollars initially requested, and we spent all eight million, but we were four million short at Charlotte Middle School, and that kills the Charlotte Middle School deal. That's what the decision we might make in January, February, March, that we don't have enough money to do that. Because again, we had the discussion about borrowing limits and where's the best place was us to borrow. How much funds the schools should be using out of their fund balance to participate in the building program? So those are also factors is, as well as the eight billion dollars or the new figure that's been requested from schools. So, so there's various factors. That's how I'm viewing it.
Well, what I guess, the way I look at that, we, we haven't, we haven't voted to build the Charlotte Middle School. I mean, we've got, you know, plans and hopes and whatever. Someday that bill going up there. But right now, if, 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 you know, the economy could change, could take a downfall, there's a lot of things could come in consideration on, on that. But I always didn't, I always try to do one step at a time. And I don't understand why putting off half of this. Say we got six point five and we're going to spend four million. So we're going to go down through and cherry pick what needs, what the majority will, will agree to. And the others will suffer until they get time. Wait, what, what are we going to do if, if we do this, and six months from now, we have a downturn in the economy and things are not good? These, these things that's lacking here will still be getting worse. And, and bids will be higher. I mean, does anybody know if you've got a bid today and you get one three months from now, it's going to be slower? Only thing, I mean, I will agree on, on the roof of the, of the Creekwood. We got lucky there, it sounds like. But I'm going to say ninety-nine percent of the time, if you, if you get a bid today, go get one three months from now, same, same thing on a lumber package or, or whatever, a new car or a new truck or a new tractor, it ain't going to be the same. So we're going to jeopardize losing. We're probably going to spend, we'll probably be back to eight million, I guess is what I'm trying to say. We will lose our two million here we just got. So we're going to go back to eight million. So that's.
Well, again, it's will of the commission, but I think the discussion on the Charlotte Middle School is very real. I've attended several meetings. It's been a real discussion. Is that still a priority for the board to move forward with Charlotte, the Dixon Elementary and other projects, Dr. Weeks?
Yes, sir, Mayor. And it would, would remind the mayor and the council or the committee that, that the board had asked that we schedule a joint planning session in the spring to talk about both the CET building and the Charlotte Middle School project. I think we looked at dates in November. Those weren't real feasible. December was kind of questionable, I think. So I think January was the earliest that, that both boards, both bodies could come together for that. I, I'm not aware of any specific dates being scheduled, but again, my last day is next Wednesday. Dr. McCord's here, and he do has two board members here as well.
We, yes, Commissioner.
I guess just, I guess from a com, I guess maybe just from my comments, I don't really know how to present it, but we're given this list, and I, I'm, I'm a huge sports fan. I mean, we, we try to support most of all the athletics here in Dixon County through, through the company that I own. But also I see those are not. But also I see, those are not priorities for me. I mean. It's great if we've, if we just got done building Charlotte Middle and the board comes and hey, we got ten million dollars left over. Then hey, those, I, I'm fine with upgrading the football fields and the softball fields and, but, um. Also for me, I mean, I'm looking at, you know, paving the maintenance and transportation department, you know, and I drive by there. And the county highway department's got a gravel parking lot and they got a paver and dump trucks and they know how to pave. So. Those things like that are not, I mean, they're not priorities for me. We're looking at what is it going to cost to build or add on to Charlotte Middle? And so I'm totally in favor of all of the maintenance. If we've got roofs. If we've got whatever needs gutters, whatever, those types are priorities for me. I can't support anything else on here until we know what the master plan is. I don't want to approve four million dollars. And then us, okay, Mayor Al, um, says we got to raise taxes next year when the school board comes in with a forty million dollar expansion. And then. I have voted on something that if I would have known what that cost would have been. I, so I guess that's where I'm coming from. And also in that, and I'll just go back a little bit, nineteen ninety-eight, when I sat on here. And we've done the eighty, I think it was eighty million dollar expansion. You know, the very first item was the field house at the Dixon County High School and we got raked over the coals because Van Leeire Elementary was the, was the last one on. The list to get fixed when they didn't even have, I think the heat wasn't working or the air wasn't working. And so. Those are the things that I have experienced over my life and, and, and being, you know, in this position. And so that's why I'm taking this stance. So.
This point in time, we've, we don't really have a motion. Okay. But let's, to carry this debate on, we heard Commissioner Grove's motion earlier. Mr. Reagan's going to restate it because I can't remember it. Um, and then we'll need a second to carry on with the discussion on that. Can you restate the motion?
Yeah. So I think where we were pending on that is, uh, and Commissioner Grove, correct me. Yeah, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong on this, but I think Commissioner Grove's motion was to. Amend the school's budget to appropriate an additional four million dollars. Or appropriate four million dollars to be used for projects on this list. And I think the question was, uh, can we narrow down? What that is and, and again, my understanding is what you're aiming for is to give the school board. An idea of what it is, the four million dollars is being approved for. With the idea that the school board would then have to adopt or approve. A budget amendment at their next meeting. Accepting what's being proposed here in this regulation tonight.
That was the motion. Is there a second to that? To continue this discussion? Or it's open for a second? That motion dies for lack of second. You've, you've already dealt with item number six with the denial. Is there any other discussion not about budget amendments for schools? Hearing none. Thank you, Dr. Weeks. Next time a business is other business is revision in the zoning resolution for R three residential. That's what you heard earlier this evening, uh, during public hearing. At this point, your vote is being asked to move that on to thirty days from now. I'll open the floor for a motion. But motion by Commissioner Buckner, second by Commissioner Gray. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next time business approval and notaries, Madam Clerk.
Okay, we have a long list. Deborah Albright, Susanna Arnold, Melinda Bradford, Raymond Cathy. Tewana, Tewana Collier, Rachel Cruz, Amy Darnell, Cruz Gillum, Caitlin Gray. Kristen Jordan, Melinda Ladd, Harden Lane, Sheila Mahan. Kim Malum, Sarah Mosley, Melissa Painter. Deandre Parish Sims, Rebecca Peralis, Kelsey Redden, Catherine Grace Hamilton Roberts. Jamie Ross, Michelle Shipley, Leslie Stamper, John Wagster, Robert Whitaker. Gwendolyn Winstead, Dawn Woodall and Terry Yates.
Thank you. Have a motion for approval. Motion have a second. All in favor, vote was stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Um. Dr. Weeks, you just got to sit down. There's a. We never stand on formality around here because it gives me a headache. Uh, so, but what we do like to stand on is, I know there's several commissioners that expressed to me. They'd like to make some comments to you directly tonight. Uh, and if whatever they don't say, I want to sum it up at the end. So. Anybody like to be recognized to speak to Dr. Weeks? Commissioner McIlwain.
It's what you've done for Dixon County, Dixon County Schools. Thank you very much.
This group got, oh, okay. They got shot. The other re talk, Commissioner Williams.
I'd like to thank you for your service here for the county. Thank you.
Same here, Dr. Weeks. I, I think you, uh, the time that you've been here. You always had the kids, the first priority was your. Started your day every day, keeping them safe and, and, uh, making sure they're learning. Thank you.
Well, at this point, I'm sorry, Commissioner Buckner.
I'd also like to thank you for the job you've done and I hope you got speed and everything works for you as you move on.
Anyone else? Thank you. I made a, a great speech earlier tonight. I should have recorded and, uh, saved that. But so I'll try to make it again because. As everybody knows me, I, I'm either cussing or crying. I don't have any in between. So, uh, and I'm not going to cuss. I've tried not to do that up here, but I, I get tuned up every once in a while. So I'm going to try to avoid that. But, uh, we, we appreciate you. Dixon, Dixon County is better for your presence and I appreciate it. Thank you. See, I told you, I want to cuss next time. Any announcements need to be made? No fish fry Thanksgiving, yes?
Concrete, Mount Sinai.
Good. Give us a fire department out there. So.
Yes, sir.
It's good to hear. Any other announcements? Hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving. Uh, get to spend time with your family or at least the ones you like. And, uh. It was good a time she can with that. I won't get my personal business, but I, I know how you feel. Uh, the next announcement is the next regular session meeting that will be on Monday, December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven PM. At the Beaufortale Booty Reed Junior, County Commission Chairman of the Dixon County Administration Building, Four Court Square, Charlotte, Tennessee. Have a motion second adjourned? Thank you.